Mr.
Senator, the meeting of the political allegiance.
We're going to institute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under your guide and with this hope that everybody can assist us all.
The report of the executive sessions.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add there were a number of bid open today for a cleaning contract and about fourteen demolition projects, two sets of demolition projects this morning. That would be awarded at later date.
And electronic.
And an ADA project on New West End, thank you.
Okay, hold on, go ahead.
Just uncle Calialto, just curious to present the update on the Hatter investigation that's supposedly going on. I think the public deserves some answers there. It's not going to get swept under the rug. Nine hundred thirty-three days today, two women are suspended without pay, blatant retaliation, but he gets to work from home, he gets rewarded. Why isn't every pervert that walks the halls in this place gets rewarded? George was allowed to stay here till five o'clock, five thirty. Mr. Bender was in charge of the consent decree, it was a federal court order, he allowed him to stay here. So he allowed his behavior, he knew all about it, read the depositions. He allowed the fifth gen Doe to take place, knew about a lot of that. Now you're allowing the escapage of Hatter. Did anybody read the federal document, the consent decree? I think yous need to go over that a little bit better, because it's pretty blatant that you guys don't know what's going on here. Now from what I hear, there's a sixth gen Doe coming forward, so that's going to be interesting. So buckle up, like I told you before. Mr. Grudy's back there, he's stated on record at least sixty-nine times, Akovich violated the consent decree. Mr. Bender's in charge of that again. Larry, I know during the campaign, you mentioned you'd want to get rid of him when you got in. Maybe the tides change now, who knows? It's time to get rid of him, he's useless. He's the puppet master here, all he does is pull the strings. Sixty-nine times to violate a federal court order? I don't know anybody that could screw up sixty-nine times in a job and get rewarded. So I assume nothing updated with the Hatter, I'm sure he won't comment on that. Just curious if anybody been interviewed, past employees, present employees? Doesn't seem like anything, there's no traction anywhere, he's just going to work from home and then he's going to sneak them back in? I mean, look what happened with, what's his name, down at the election bureau, Verkostky. He had some sexual harassment claims against him in the office up here and he asked to homeschool his son and then automatically George finds him a job down there away from everybody. Everything gets pushed under the rug here. Also, I see Ms. Graves on the agenda again. No update though from last week that Mr. Hess requested. Forty-five dollars an hour, Mr. Bender said that was past practice, it was not, it was forty. So an increase now by five dollars, no time limit, no cap. I don't understand how you can just push this stuff through. She hasn't been here just shy of twenty years. Do you realize how much Retsel's stuff has been updated in twenty years? Obviously, she has no clue what she's doing because several deeds have already been pushed back that she looked over to approve. So if that's the help that you were sending boots last year, somebody that hasn't been there for twenty years, I think they need a little bit more help than that.
That's it, Jim.
Thank you.
Dana Pollock.
Good morning, George, good morning. George Stankovich, Calialto, once again, I'll just bring it up again about the senior citizens. And I know there's veterans out there too that are hurting, I know Larry, what you said, and I know the information, I already have all that information. I know who to go to here in courthouse, I can't drag people there, but anybody out there that's hearing this right now, or the person here in the courthouse that Veteran Affairs says that they'll take care of any type of problem if you meet the requirements as far as what, how much you make, which is ridiculous, that's how they have the rules. But anybody out there that needs help, veterans, I implore you to show up at the courthouse, ask for information, they'll even take you right to the office, show you how to get there. And now for the senior citizens, I, I don't know what else to say about this assessment. I said, I still say this outfit shouldn't be doing the assessment. They've done a lot of underhanded deals, changed their names few times, it was known, and they still took this outfit to be their spokespersons here, to set the limits and everything for everybody. I'm telling you right now, I've said it before, if I lose my home because I can't pay my taxes, I'm going to make sure that one of the politicians are going to see me knocking on their door to live with them. I'm not kidding around about that. I think it's foolishness, right now, the way the world is, the way the times are, people are hurting, I don't, I don't know, these people that are making fifty, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars are the ones that are doing all this nonsense, putting us in this trouble. Jeff brought out about now Kent is in trouble. We're going to get sued again. It should not come on the taxpayers, I don't know, get lawyers to fight this, go to that judge and change this. This is ridiculous, we shouldn't be, as taxpayers, paying this. This is ridiculous, those persons found guilty, they should take care of whatever problem, and if they have to sell their business, if they have to sell their homes, whatever they have, let them learn how to go flip hamburgers. That'd be a nice job for them. I'm tired of this, this is nonsense, I think it should be looked into, this is a criminal action. What you're trying to do to taxpayers, to flip that bill to them, rather than putting on the person that caused the problem, this is ridiculous. Completely ridiculous, and the people from the West End, I hope yous found out something, some kind of, help for these guys. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Wendy Mayne Flur, I live out in the dumping grounds, West End, County. I just want to let yous know I was working to snatch again at three AM, three AM this morning, it was still there on my left, my house not above the cesspool, it's disgusting. Also, to George, what George says about paying taxes, we pay our taxes, we pay your salaries, right? All, all the politicians, we pay your salaries. He's, he's right. Why should we have to pay taxes with the way we have to live? And, and they are, that the seniors, I feel really bad for them, I do, because they're on a budget, just like a lot of other people, it's sad to say, and they should be taken care of, that's how I feel. But anyways, that's my opinion. So, with that being said, I think he's right, okay? I think maybe our communities ought to band together and we shouldn't pay our taxes either, because for what quality of life we have to live, why should we have to pay taxes? And then we get reassessed and now we're probably going to have to pay more taxes? Why? Maybe we should just let politicians have our homes, youths have our homes, you know what I mean? I'd, I'd offer George to come live with me, but I don't want to put him in that kind of environment, what quality of life is that? So maybe we should band together and not pay our taxes out there, and we should just, same way what George says, go, maybe we need to go to Senator Arbo's home, knock on his door, hey, we need a home now. Or maybe we ought to go to Congressman User, knock on his door, hey, we need a home. We should, hey, we should go to governor's home, you know, knock on the door. Youths are put in place because of the civilians here, the people, the citizens, I should say. You're, youths are put in place, it's your, you should be taking care of us, and I hope something is resolved at your meeting on Monday. Because we, we need it, we need some kind of resolution here. Thank you.
Dana Pollock.
Sure, sweet, Shirley Wagner, Berber Township, can you hold that? Okay, thank you. I just want to give the commissioners and a copy of a petition that we have signed with several hundred signatures against what is going on out at the West End. Gary Bender is our township supervisor, I will give him the originals, so he can turn them in. But it's, it's more than a few grumpy old ladies complaining, hundreds of signatures, some of them including the new warehouses out there, Big Lots and Amazon, just so you're aware, it's not just, you know, we're talking about WoodSpring, Joliet Kemper's, Newtown, Pine Grove, Tree Month, all of these, and I want you to have a copy of this. A supervisor from Branch Township did their own petition, and he gave me a copy with eighty-six signatures if we were interested, I said, sure, we'll take them, you know, Newtown isn't that far away from us. But anyway, after you meet with DEP on Monday, I would hope you don't come back and tell us your hands are tied, and if so, would you please tell me whose hands aren't tied, so we can go to them? So thank you. Gary, would you like these petitions today, or do you want them?
No, I can get you your copies after the meeting.
What?
I can get you your copies after the meeting.
Okay, well, if you want to walk things up, that one's for the commissioners, one's for DEP, and here is yours, and we have more coming. This is your, these are the originals.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and you will take them up there and give them to them, thank you.
That's Shirley's profound statement, Shirley, I'm sure we'll, we'll take that information on Monday, we got the DEP.
And if you have, there's a copy for you guys and a copy for them.
We will definitely part attend, also, part of our conversation is going to be the Brad's land, we all drove up recently to smell the smell of the Brad's, so these issues are not going unnoticed. That'll be part of our conversation on Monday.
Okay.
I mean, once again, we do not regulate, we do not, the townships sign a risk, but time has come to get make something happen, I agree with you.
Well, somebody has to soon do something.
Right, right.
It was back in this morning, it was very bad.
This is the status quo for almost two years, something has to, something has to happen. We're going to be pretty, pretty rough on those guys on Monday, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for bringing your information, thank you for the call members.
We will follow up within thirty days to make sure these petitions got in the hands of where they're supposed to go.
Well, we have also, did you see the story on WNP about a plan to fill up in, I think it was, was Earn County?
Yeah.
They, he sells, they had air monitoring systems there, five, five hundred and some thousand dollars.
Five hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I was bringing that, I'm bringing, I have that saved, and we're bringing that up to the, they're not going to be happy. Because I have a whole list of questions of, why is this done, why is it done here, why is it done here, why do you do that there? I, you know what I mean? If you're going to do something in one place, there should be a standard everywhere. And we only have the authority, they let us, but we're going to try to do all that we can, that the state uses us, but we're going to try to push this, because that right? And in my opinion, I think the homeowners out there should join together and file a class action lawsuit.
In response to that, Larry, the companies do their homework, they go into areas that are low income, uneducated, a certain political party, and a predictable regulatory area that we're in, fits all those, so they know ahead of time, nobody has the money to have filed a class action suit. But I, I'll tell you what may happen, some people may try to sell their properties now, and the money they get, which I'm seventy-five, I shouldn't have to worry about that at this point in my life, but if push comes to shove, maybe that's what we'll just have to do. But they know that ahead of time, they know there isn't any money there, and they know the regulatory climate in this area, they know where to go. I'm sorry, we have so much.
After that meeting, then I know, it's one of these, I'm going to do, I'm coming up, do a surprise thing, and I'll let, I'll let yous know, and I'm not letting anybody know until I drive and everything, because I want to see what it's like for real.
You've got to, you've got to get this under control.
We got to move on.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Deborah Bootwach, Burley Township, and I'm a member of the West, Saint West End. I have no idea if yous looked into the PFAs, the PFOAs, and the PFOS, they have been linked to serious health issues. EPA said toxic forever chemicals are in these soils. Pennsylvania has weak regulations, and I mean weak, and it's a shame, there's absolutely no testing. There's no warnings about biosolids fertilizer products, there's no warning on them. PFAs, PFAS's contamination is in your gardens when you use these fertilizers. You have to be afraid to even grow vegetables, fruits, because you don't know what you're putting on your food because of these biosolids. I'm afraid to even buy from friends, boots, do you have any type of biosolids?
We do not, that's been a misnomer, that was a campaign trick, because you, we do not, never have, never will put biosolids on our farm, we do not do that.
Does Frank Crumbis deliver any?
No, I don't, he's a woman or a competitor, if you gave me a load of biosolids, I have no other to do, I just never, never had, never will.
Because he's one of the worst.
And I, I can't, I would have to get a permit from the DEP to plant them, and they would not allow me to plant any of the crops on my farm.
Because he is a big culprit, Frank Crumbis. There was an Easter egg hunt at a park, and there was soil that was dumped high, and everybody at that Easter egg hunt was sick because of the smell being that bad. Those children had to put up with that horrible smell. I just don't understand why we have to fight so hard to get a decent living environment, I mean, it's a shame. And another thing, a third of the Pennsylvania waterways are considered polluted. That's scary, a third. Are we soon going to be, end up going into a half of the waterways being polluted? You have to be afraid to drink your water, it's going to affect the wildlife, and also any type of recreation. There's twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-six streams affected. In Alabama, Texas, they have a habit of stopping it, they fight, the state is fighting, and I don't understand why Pennsylvania can't fight for the residents, the taxpayers, and their state. Yes, it's a shame, three minutes, I mean, it's a total shame that you people only get three minutes to talk something really important that we are facing. Yeah, I know, okay, have a good day.
Dana Pollock. Okay, if not, we're going to move on with the minute, or meeting, final approval. Approval of the minutes of the commissioner's meeting on March twenty-seventh.
So moved.
Second. Question?
Mishna Fedora.
Yes.
Mishna Heatherington.
Yes.
Mishna Hess.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for the commissioner's work session of April third.
So moved.
Second. Question?
Mishna Fedora.
Yes.
Mishna Heatherington.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mishna Hess.
Yes.
Okay, Frank, you want to give us an update since you?
Sure. There are two, two items on the agenda for your consideration today, agreements associated with projects utilizing the redevelopment area capital assistance program. RCAP is a state program that basically provides grants to entities, municipal entities, economic development entities, for projects associated with obviously economic development for community development projects. We've done five projects over the course of time with, with the Schuylkill County Industrial Development Authority as a sponsor, including projects associated with a major expansion of their product several years ago. Two projects associated with construction of industrial spec buildings, both now occupied by companies, and also the development of a travel plaza site. and also the development of a travel plaza site at the Hiram Business Park, which is now under construction. So, the project documentation that's in front of you is basically parallel with what previously was submitted for consideration. The reason it's submitted to you is that SKEA is an entity created by the county commissioner of Schuylkill County Industrial Development Authority back in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy. SETCO as an economic development agency is a nonprofit. We're not a municipal entity. We cannot apply directly for any of those state funds. We need a municipal entity to do so. And since the county is the parent to SKEA, those indemnification and cooperation agreements before you are part of the documentation required for the grant program. The two projects that are in front of you today include one by SETCO at the Hiram Business Park for what we call Lot Six. The grant is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We need to match that with a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution as well. And what we're doing is taking the six acre parcel up there and putting it basically to pad-ready conditions. After that project is completed, it'll take, it will allow for the accommodation of a seventy-five thousand square foot industrial building, and given the fact that it's pad-ready site, it cuts off about nine to twelve months' worth of permitting. So it's an instantaneous project can be developed on it. That's located in Gas Township. The other project is four point eight million dollar grant, which was awarded out of the governor's office to a company called Espoma. Espoma is a New Jersey-based company that manufactures potty soils. I think Hollytone is the brand name that they, they market the product under. That is located in Freely Township at a site just off of Route twenty-five, which would be the Higgins exit of Interstate eighty-one. That project is intended to basically offset the land application of chicken manure in multiple counties in Pennsylvania as part of the Chesapeake Bay, Chesapeake Bay watershed requirements. Obviously, the displacement of that much land applied, chicken manure is an environmental benefit to Pennsylvania. It's got the strong endorsement of the Department of Agriculture, the Department of Community and Economic Development, and also the governor's office, which again made the grant available to the company. They're at the back end of constructing roughly about a forty thousand square foot building in which they will take dried chicken manure, process it, dry it, and then ship it to New Jersey for future processing and packaging. That displacement of, of the nutrients into the Chesapeake Bay, obviously, was seen as a very positive environmental benefit for both Pennsylvania and for those counties in the Chesapeake Bay area. So those are the two documents before you, and I think there's also a resolution to be adopted to allow you to execute the, the consent indemnification agreements. I can answer any specific questions if I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion to approve was presented by the grant writer at our workshop session.
So moved.
Second.
The question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Motion to approve was presented by the president of our workshop session.
I'll make the motion to approve the president's request.
Second.
The question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. So for planning and zoning to approve what they presented at our workshop?
I'll make the motion to approve the petition of the two people to the county park committee.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion to approve was presented for public rights recreation at our workshop session?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes. The motion to approve was presented by the Conservation District at our workshop's workshop session?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion for the agricultural land preservation?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion to approve was presented at the workshop by the Office of Senior Services.
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion to approve was presented at the workshop by the district attorney's office.
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion to approve the Schuylkill County Postal Municipality for the RCAP applications for SKEA and SETCO?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. The motion for the county administration, the legal services, and gaming center presented at the workshop session?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. For the tax claim, I will put in, put that contract, it's a three-month contract, is not to exceed fifteen hours per week. Is the amount of time.
I'd like the dates to make sure that they coincide with today's date, and also July tenth of twenty-four.
Why wasn't that made public on the agenda? I don't think you can vote on articles that are made public.
You, you could make a little.
It's an amendment.
It's an amendment to the, to the beginning of the meeting.
You can do it now. If you want to make a motion to amend the, amend the agenda to clarify the terms of that contract, you can do that, but can we?
You should have done the beginning of the meeting so the public could comment on it.
We can open it up for public comment.
Yes, go ahead. Open it up for public comment.
Well, first, let's make the motion, open it up for public comment.
And make a motion, what's, what's, what we need to do?
You want to amend the budget to alter the terms. I made the motion to, under tax claim, we limited it to fifteen hours per week and only a three-month contract, which is point time. As a matter of fact.
Second.
Okay. On the question, you could open it up for public.
Other question? If you'll comment, if you have a question.
Is this, is this being backdated still to March, when you guys were clueless that this person was working there? Or is this contract effective today?
Today.
Today. So it's effective today.
It was paid on the, the thing that we approved last week.
Yeah, the, the designated contract.
Designee contract.
So she's not being paid prior to today?
It was under the designated.
Contract. Okay. So what was she paid up to date? You, you didn't have that figure last week?
We don't. It's March fourteenth to April tenth of that contract. This one begins April tenth.
March fourteen, date of tenth. And you don't know how much she made during that period?
I do not.
And the reason why it got increased from forty to forty-five?
It's approved by the board as today.
So three months and fifteen hours a week?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Forty-five dollars an hour for somebody that hasn't been here for twenty years, that doesn't know what she's doing. Congratulations, guys. You're screwing the taxpayers again.
Well, I think it's trying to get some help there.
I know. They used to promise help for a while.
Well, there is help.
They need to, there's help, but there's deeds going up and then being sent back. It's not a lot of help.
No, well, we're trying to work on it.
And there's other people who are trying to get back into that office.
Why don't you bring the ones back that are nine hundred and thirty-three days suspended without payment? That's the resolution.
This is not supposed to be, this is.
Yeah, this ain't over this hour.
And also on that area, I know I did ask on the amount of money that was spent prior to that, and I would, I thought I'd have that on how much was spent on that contract up to date.
Yeah, she did not spend her invoice yet. When, when I get that invoice. Unbelievable.
Thank you.
And I could have opened a new contract too.
Okay, there was a motion, there was a second. Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes. Uh, can we have a motion to approve was presented at the workshop from the public defender's office?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes. Uh, can we have a motion for the affordable housing trust fund report presented in the workshop?
So moved.
Second. Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes. Human resources.
Commissioners, good morning. We've got three appointments in nine-one-one. As telecommunicator trainees, the rate for all three is twenty dollars an hour, effective date for all three, four twenty-two, twenty-four. Their names are Levi Benninger, Michael Fry, and Lorian Lazarsky, and those rates are set by the union contract. In children and youth, we have the appointment of Jocelyn Harash Barrett, county caseworker two. Rate is twenty-two point three eight three six, effective for twenty-nine forty-four, that is per the union contract. All appointments are pending. Drug tested physical. All actions involving salary war for positions being created are pending salary board approval.
And we need a motion to, can I have a motion for?
I'll make a motion to approve the night, off the nine-one-one, ultimate three twenty.
We gotta prove that.
Excuse me, I'll make the motion to approve the children and youth appointment.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes. Paul?
Commissioners, good morning. This morning I have two supplemental budget appropriation resolutions I'd like to present. The first one, both of them are for the current year. The first one is twenty twenty-four dash oh six. I'm presenting this on behalf of the adult probation department. It's for thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Commissioners, this is in connection with back on March twenty-seventh. The board approved the purchase of twenty-five Kevlar vests for personnel in the adult probation office. This is initially going to be purchased from the county general fund, and then the general fund will be reimbursed by the offender supervision fee account. So the purpose of the resolution is to adjust the appropriate line items, so that the expense can occur in reimbursement as well. Next I have is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven. I'm presenting this on behalf of the MHDs Agency. Total dollar amount is for ninety-one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Commissioners, this is for a grant that was awarded. The county is a pass-through entity. The grant was from PCCD. The purpose is to assist with funding for the coke responder program.
Can I have a motion to approve the supplemental budget appropriations, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh six?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Commissioner Hess.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve the supplemental budget appropriation resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think you threw me to approve item fifteen.
Oh, okay. No, we didn't. We voted. And we did.
We did this.
We did that.
We did. You did, you did the personal retirement.
We did retirement, but this is per union contract.
The motion was for the children.
No, we're up here to stop it. Number fifteen.
Number fifteen.
Item fifteen, revision of the pension and retirement plan policy.
No, of course we did that. Okay, can I motion through for human resources, approval of the vision of a pension and retirement plan policy?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
And Mr. Hess.
Yes. Uh, you business, Gary Bennett?
I don't know who is.
Okay. Human resource, personal information. Just, yeah, already did that, so. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Uh, salary board meeting. Report my executive session to fire board.
Very much.
Uh, public comment for salary board?
No, I'm good. I thought you were gonna graduate.
Okay. Um, can I motion through the minutes for salary board meeting of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Other question?
Commissioner Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
And Controller Yekenshik.
Yes.
Can I motion through the minutes to the salary board workshop, November third?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Controller Yekenshik.
Yes.
Human resource, personnel.
We have one item, divestment relations create position of case officer A, effective five-one-twenty-four, and that is all.
I'll make a motion if we approve the position of case officer A.
Other question? Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Controller Yekenshik.
Yes.
And Judge Russell.
Any new business for the salary board?
Motion adjourned.
Okay, retired. Report my executive sessions help for retirement board?
There were none.
Any public comment for retirement board?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, approval of minutes from monthly meeting is March thirteenth to twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Controller Yekenshik.
Yes.
Treasury guide.
Yes.
Controller's report.
Good morning. During the month of March twenty twenty-four, two members received retirements of four hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars with pro-rata payments of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Five members received refunds of sixteen thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. Two members received rollovers of thirty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars. One beneficiary will receive a monthly payment of three hundred eighty-nine dollars a month with a pro-rata payment of two hundred thirty-nine dollars in the month of March. Two deceased retirees received pro-rata payments of a hundred sixty-one dollars. The market value of the retirement fund as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four was one hundred sixty million nine hundred five thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars. The total market value of the retirement fund as of April tenth, twenty twenty-four is one hundred sixty million two hundred twenty thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars. Also, Heather Garrity is requesting to buy back a leave of absence. Thank you.
Can I motion to approve the controller's report?
So moved.
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Fedora.
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Hess.
Controller Yekenshik.
Yes.
Treasury guide.
Yes.
Is there any new business for the retirement board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioners, I would also just like to mention that this morning there was a bid opening in connection with several CDBG projects. Those bids will be reviewed and awarded at future times.
While there was still here, I'd like to take a quick brief moment here to say a thank you to the founder per user. Received a two million dollar grant for our emergency operations center. That piggybacks to grant that we got received from Senator Casey. This is huge for Schuylkill County. When we spoke at Senator Casey's office way, way back years ago, there are thousands of requests that are put in each year, a hand for a pick. So I feel very blessed that Senator Casey and his representative of Congress for Youth are both able to come through for us. Each of those two million dollar grants each, along with our one million bucks we put away in our ARCA fund, we kind of asked for that. It's gonna go a long way to achieving our emergency operations center. This is a project that was with a lot of effort by the county, including Mr. Mr. Bender, Lisa Mayhall, and Eric, and Paul Booper, our firefighters association, our fire chiefs association, emergency management teams. Public safety is our number one responsible as commissioners. And this facility will support, train, and restore the ranks of our volunteers. So I'm very pleased and honest this came through. This has been a long time in the wind making, and it's a huge day for Schuylkill County to have this opportunity to make this project a reality, so. Gary, you want to say something on that?
Yeah, yes, definitely on Senator Casey. Actually, not that it had anything to do with it, but the accident that was up on eighty-one. The senator was stuck in that thing, and he seen firsthand those, the first responders and how it was handled and everything else. And tragically, life was lost, but on how all of our first responders here in the county responded. And again, that was a need up there. As you know, the number of volunteers and the first responders has basically doubled down even more of trying to get young people involved in firefighting, emergency services, especially on ambulance and paramedics and so forth. It's at a drastic call. This thing is gonna also help to have a facility that they can do large trainings. Right now, they need to either go into a school or whatever when they do classroom type stuff. So this is both gonna help our emergency management services and so forth. And Senator Casey seen that need here and definitely worked, you know, his efforts to get us those, those two million. And Senator Casey seen that need here and definitely worked, you know, his efforts to get us those, that two million dollars. Again, a lot of that with Senator Casey and Congressman Reuser, a lot of that, you know, basically is coming from federal money, and hopefully it's not much of taxpayer money here. So again, as volunteer firefighters, I've always said that if you're out there and you see a breakfast, a fundraiser, whatever, you know that ten or twelve dollars goes a long way, because a lot of the equipment and the people just to dress to get them in uniform and turnout clear is an exorbitant amount. So again, this is hopefully for not just today, but hopefully and will into the future of firefighting and emergency services. So we definitely appreciate the call of our, you know, senator and congressman on what they have seen the need here in Schuylkill County to move emergency services forward and public safety as a whole, so.
You can omit today's comment by Frank St. Gary, that you said about fighting fires, with vehicle access, we have hybrid vehicles, electric car vehicles, it's become a lot more a lot more complicated, more technical, and like the same way, like Mr. Hess said, this has been a long way to having trained people and restore the ranks of our volunteers, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. What time's salary?